The general administration, we have a change for that to read. Do we have a copy of that which we took off?
Yes.
This.
This is the new copy.
Okay, we, if you look at that particular item of the resolution that we took off to be located in the downtown area of the city of Starville, we added just a period at the end of the justice complex. If you'll please note those two items on the change of the agenda. Now I think we're ready to approve the official agenda with the consent items. Before we approve it, do we have any, any thought on the consent items? Do we have any objection or change or anything? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the official agenda with the changes that have been made?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Second with, as been so said. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, it does approve. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. Any questions pertaining to the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor and Board, there are several items on the minutes where I feel the information given is incomplete. I will work with the city clerk on completing those items if you wish to approve the minutes tonight.
That would be very kind of you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes from June the 21st and May the 23rd?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This brings us down to board business. The first time we have is in regard to the rules of order that we would follow. I believe that this last board group followed the American, is it national order? Is that right, Mr. McLeod?
The American Institute of Parliamentarians, the standard code of parliamentary procedure.
And the other obvious is Robert's Rules of Order. Do we have a request at this time of the board?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I of course would continue to recommend that the city utilize the standard code of parliamentary procedure, the fourth edition by the American Institute of Parliamentarians. This generally has just been described as Robert's Rules of Order without the deadwood, and it certainly is that. You have in basic English, an easy to understand version of a code of parliamentary procedure which departs only from Robert's Rules of Order in some particular aspects. Easy to understand, easy to read, easy to follow, Robert's Rules of Order is to the contrary, the opposite of all of that.
Very good. Do we have a motion of which particular set that you would like to accept?
I would move that the city continue to utilize the standard code of parliamentary procedure, fourth edition, put out by Alice Sturgis and revised by the American Institute of Parliamentarians.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes. We will continue in the process that we've had for the last four years. The next item of discussion is regarding the appointment of a mayor pro temp for the vice mayor basically, for the year 2005 to 2009. The floor is now open for motioning or discussion.
This time I would like to make a motion that we appoint Alderman Roy Perkins as mayor pro temp.
It's my pleasure to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other people that would like to be nominated or persons that would like to nominate someone?
I move we accept Mr. Perkins by open acclamation.
Excellent. Do I hear affirmative vote to that? All those say aye, please?
Aye.
It's, congratulations, Mr. Perkins, you've been voted by everybody here.
Right.
Even me, and I don't get a chance to vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, this next item is a discussion regarding the appointment of a budget committee and budget chairman. Do I hear from all the people nomination?
Mr. Mayor, if I may be recognized, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Alderman Matt Cox, Alderman PC McLawren Jr., and Alderman Jeanette Self be appointed to serve as members of our budget committee with Alderman Cox serving as chairperson, that the mayor, Dan Camp, shall serve as a non-voting member of the budget committee, that our city accountant, Ms. Debbie Clark, shall attend all budget committee meetings, that Ms. Debbie Clark shall attend the board meetings regarding budgetary matters when requested by the mayor and or chairman of the committee, and that our city clerk, Ms. Marquita Outlaw, shall attend the budget committee meetings when
Do we have any discussion on his motion? Floor is open for discussion.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, the duties which I perform at the university have increased considerably over the last several months with the addition of a homeland security contract in excess of $2 million which will be providing training in the area of homeland security all over the state of Mississippi. I'm going to respectfully decline to participate as a member this year of the budget committee. I of course will be around for advice and counsel and caution and all sorts of things. I have prepared some 17 city budgets. It takes an inordinate amount of time, and I really think others should have exposure to that process, so I will decline appointment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Perkins, would you consider someone else appointing to that committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First, if it pleases the chair, what other member at the table then, since Mr. McLawren has declined, would like to serve on that committee? Do we have any volunteers? Can I add another name?
Don't be bashful. It's an inordinate amount of work for no extra pay. Summer, you sitting there anybody quiet?
I would rather not for same reasons. I've got a regular full-time job, you know.
Mr. Mills?
I don't have a problem serving, though.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I would insert Mr. Mills' name in lieu of Mr. McLawren.
I see. Okay. Do we have any other names that would be nominated this time? Guess not. Do we have a second to your motion?
I second the motion.
Did you second the motion? Okay, very good. We have a motion with a second that Mr. Cox serve as the chairman of the budget committee with Ms. Self and Mr. Mills and myself as a non-voting member in which Ms. Clark, I believe, is to be at all these particular meetings. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. This brings us down to discussion regarding appointment of a committee to negotiate a fire contract with Mississippi State University. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as you well know, we're obligated to renegotiate that contract with Mississippi State before August 1st, and I'd like to move that we establish a committee to negotiate that fire contract with MSU, with members serving including Alderman Sonner Davis who currently serves on that committee and would provide us with continuity, the mayor, the budget chair, the fire chief, and also Alderman Corey if he would be willing to do so.
I would be honored.
So it looks like we have a committee in the formation here. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to add to this particular motion or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to have Mr. Cox, Mr. Corey, Mr. Davis, and myself on this negotiation with Mississippi State University, of course with fire chief?
We didn't get a second.
We didn't get a second? I thought, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I thought Corey did, but I guess he was just agreeing to volunteer on it. We do have a motion with a second at this point. All those in favor of the motion, you want to read the motion back where everybody understands?
Appointed committee to negotiate a fire contract with MSU. We have Alderman Davis, the mayor, the budget chair, Alderman Corey, and the fire chief.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Brings us down to public appearances. We have a Dr. McKibben and Mr. Dr. Parvin. If you gentlemen would come forth, you're to discuss a proposal here that is going to be talked about. We welcome our medical group of our community tonight. We rarely see you, gentlemen. Unless it's in a case that we would probably prefer not to see you, I think.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you for the opportunity to come and address you this evening. I'm Everett McKibben. I'm a family practice physician. I practiced in Starville for 13 years, and Starville's my home. Dr. Parvin and I are talking tonight about the proposed outpatient radiology clinic. Plans were approved by the zoning and planning commission. We don't believe that's a good idea for Octavia County Hospital, and ultimately that's not a good idea for the community as a whole. I want to tell you why I say that. Octavia County Hospital is one of the few county hospitals in the state that operates independently of county funding. We take modest amount from the county every year to help cover our ambulance expenses, but beyond that, the hospital is self-supporting, and that's quite an accomplishment. And it does that despite writing off approximately 60% of its charges. Those write-offs come from contractual agreements with insurance companies and millions of dollars every year to help cover the health expenses of those individuals who cannot I've moonlighted in some county hospitals in years past that were rundown, dirty, depressing places, and our county hospital is not like that at all, and we don't want to see it become like that. Bottom line is that your county hospital needs every dollar that its radiology department generates to help it continue to provide the quality of health care to every member of this community regardless of his or her ability to pay. I prepared a little schematic that I'd like to show you that I help, I think will help illustrate my point if I may. I want you to notice that I've depicted the community in the middle and a county hospital on the side over here. You can't talk about health care without talking about dollars. Takes a lot of money to run a hospital, and this issue is about the flow of dollars. When the community invests money in its county hospital, notice that this arrow is a two-way arrow. Money flows into a public county hospital, and the services flow back to the community. Part of that is this red right here, a write-off, or care for the individuals in the community who cannot afford to care. Whenever you have a for-profit privately-owned independent radiology clinic that duplicates the services of the hospital, you don't see a two-way arrow flowing on the dollars. You see a one-way arrow. And in this case in particular, the arrows even leave the town. The reason all of us physicians are here this evening, the reason Dr. Parvin and I are talking to you is this. Our hospital is going to suffer if this green goes over here and up there. This red's going to get bigger. We hate to see something like that happen to our county hospital. As a physician in the community, I do not see where we need a facility like this, and as a citizen of the community, I don't see why we'd want a facility like this. And as chief of staff at OCH and as representative of a number of physicians in the community, we're respectfully requesting that the Board of Aldermen not approve the recommendation of zoning and planning commission relative to the premier radiology clinic. Thank you for your kind attention. Dr. Parvin.
Mayor and Aldermen, I'm Steve Harman. I grew up here in Starville and have been actively practicing now since 1976. I'm here to report to you that we have an excellent hospital in Starville. We have an excellent medical staff in Starville. Let's not say we don't have problems. Every medical place has problems, and we are directing our attention and correcting these problems. We're trying to grow. We're trying to recruit physicians and services that we need, services that the community needs. We have been good stewards of the health care dollar. We have not wasted money at our hospital. The doctors in this community work 10 to 14 hours a day, every day of the week. They are members of your churches, your school. They send their children to school here. They spend their money here. All their, they're deeply involved in community activities. They don't work eight hours a day and get in their car and drive someplace out of the county. Doctors should be members of the community in which they practice and make money, I believe in. The second point that I would like to make is that I don't understand how there is such a thing as an emergency meeting of the planning and zoning commission. I don't believe that that was properly advertised. I couldn't help but reflect on Brian Hawkins' article in a paper that talked about trust and talked about members of the elected, our elected officials always seeing both sides of any issue before they make any decision. I would ask you to look at that. Was that meeting held properly? Was it properly advertised? And if it wasn't, I would ask you to vote no again on the request to approve that agenda. In closing, I would ask all the citizens of Starville to help us recruit physicians. We're interested in physicians. We're actively trying to recruit family doctors, internists, an oncologist, a pulmonologist, and a cardiologist. We know what this hospital, what this county and this hospital needs, but another group of radiologists is redundant and duplicate services that already exist. So I would enlist y'all's help as we try to recruit these physicians that are critical to health care in Starville.
Thank you.
Any of the board members have questions?
Dr. Parvin, I'd like to address this question you.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about MRI equipment. Can you assure this community that we would have the equivalent, same equipment to perform MRIs as the people from the university or diploma?
In our $30 million expansion that all of y'all see is being built there, there is a brand-new radiology service, including that is what's called a 1.5 tesla MRI machine. The machine that's being discussed tonight is primarily for research is a three tesla. So to answer your question, all of y'all, the machine that we have will not be stronger, but I would assure you, the community and the people, that being stronger does not make it clinically applicable. The 1.5 is the standard, and that's what you'll find in most hospitals around the state and around the country. I recently was in Memphis with a problem, a neurosurgical problem. The neurosurgeon had the opportunity to use a 1.5 tesla, which we will have in our new hospital, and a three, because they have a three in Memphis. He chose a 1.5. This has been in the last six months. So the point I'm making is that bigger is not better. Bigger is not clinically applicable. In other words, if you have a machine that does all these wonderful things, some doctor still has to take it and use it clinically to manage his patients, and I don't believe that that is an issue. I believe the 1.5 tesla, which is the standard of care around this country, will cover all the services that we need, just like it does at Badger's Hospital in Jackson or St. Dominique's Hospital in Jackson, and cover all the clinical services that we need.
Thank you. Any other board members? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for being part of our community. It brings us down to citizens' involvement. Do we have any citizens in the audience that would like to have up to three minutes to speak? Alvin, you're not going to speak tonight?
I'm just kidding. Me either.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine.
You can count on that. Well, I was counting on that tonight. That brings us down to departmental business, and the first item is community development. There he is.
Board, I have to recite the, the gentleman we're just talking about, the site plan. The planning commission met last year tonight in a special call meeting to consider this. The site plan that you have in front of you is, meets all the city requirements as far as site plans for middle. The applicant was not asking for any land use, variance, or exceptions, or rezoning. Therefore, we were not required to have any advertised public hearing on that, nor were we required to notify any surrounding neighbors in that area of that back. This is allowed, this particular complex is allowed by right in city zoning. The planning commission met to co-roll the merits of the site plan review, not the actual use of that as far as whether we needed or not. They deemed that it met all the requirements of the ordinance as far as site plan review goes, and also that there, in your place there is actual the photographs, with drawings of the exterior of the building as well as the landscape, plan for that facility. We have three exits or entrances, one off Stark Road, one off 182, and the third one will be off of Mallory Drive on the west side. It will be about 25,000 square feet roughly building, housing, medical facilities. And in the medical facility was not the question, it was the question of the site plan as it sat on the ground. It didn't make the setbacks, the parking, the landscaping, and that kind of scenario. Planning commission, I think there were six members there, they voted unanimously to approve the site plan as many dollars as possible, and they recommend to you that they approve it.
Any questions for any of the board members? Or Mr. Webb?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just one question here. Mr. Webb specifically, what was done to advertise the meeting of the planning and zoning commission?
We notified the members of the planning zone.
A period.
Right.
Oh, I don't know where we got sidetracked on all of this, but all department heads and everyone, please listen very carefully to this. All committees of the city, no matter of what sort, and this includes the planning and zoning commission, are required to follow the open meetings requirements of state law which requires certain specific notice in advance of a special meeting, in this case of the planning and zoning commission. So if what was done is as you described, then the planning and zoning commission was not properly noticed.
Well, I did, the software's legal lady and she notified me with no notification for it. And that's, that's the reason why we did.
Right. You know, with all due respect to the legal lady, as you called her, and I corresponded with her.
Attorney, I suppose, is that right?
Yes.
By email today, and that of course was not the indication she gave me as to the Let me go a step further. There are two things in particular that are very distressing to me about this whole situation. What has not been said here tonight is that we're dealing with a Mississippi State University-sponsored in part project as well as a situation with Octavia County Hospital. It is distressing to me that we have two of the leading entities, institutions in our community, backbone of the community, that are in a sense at opposite ends of the spectrum on this particular matter. The distressing thing is I do not understand why the two entities could not have gotten together on a very obvious health care project of this sort. I do not understand what happened, when it happened, why it happened, and not here to try to, who's at fault for this, that, or the other, beside the point now. It is distressing that these two major institutions of our community did not get together on this. The second thing that needs to be understood by the general public is that what is being presented to us from the planning and zoning commission, whether or not it came from a properly noticed meeting, is a site plan review for a commercial enterprise on a lot that is properly zoned, for which there have been no variances requested, no... that is properly zoned, for which there have been no variances requested, no use changes, no nothing. And this board of Alderman, just like the Planning and Zoning Commission, have no discretion in whether or not to approve the project. This is not a question of, do we think it's a good project that is needed for our community? That's not the issue. We simply are called upon to determine that a site plan has been presented by a commercial enterprise. Is it on property's own property? Is everything they have done proper as far as the project is concerned, not the worth of the project? And so this board of Alderman really has no discretion over this matter at all in terms of this requested approval. So we have a, a number of issues at work here tonight that I, I wish had been prevented early on.
Okay, you through anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, had Mr. McLaurin not made the statement, I probably would have kept my mouth shut about the hospital and the university working. And I think it's only fair that the citizens know that the hospital did try, the hospital offered to build this building for this MRI. So I think that information needs to be known that the hospital did try to work with the university, because some people had the perception that there was no dialogue between the university and the hospital. And I know that that is not true. So I feel like I need to say that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other, any other statements? Do I hear a motion that we approve this site plan review?
Mr. Favor, do you have any objection in light of the comments that Mr. McLaurin's made of a motion going forward? Mr. Webb had indicated that there was no special notice requirements that were, were needed. The committee met and took action on it, and Mr. McLaurin raised allegations. Certainly, I'm going to support this matter, because as Mr. Webb said, that this is a matter that the property is, is already zoned for the intended use. There is no request before this board for rezoning, there is no request for a special exception. So if the site plan meets all of the, the city ordinances, the building codes, and any other applicable laws of the city, then we are obligated, in my opinion, to support this recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, after any contrary recommendation from the attorney who's sitting tonight advising the board. And I am going to move that this board adopt the recommendation of the city's Planning and Zoning Commission that would recommend approval of the site plan for this radiology clinic slash radiological research facility.
I have, as I say, I just got, I just, this is my first day to be here, I wasn't aware of any of these issues, but as far as your point about the approval of the site plan, I'm not addressing the Planning and Zoning Commission issue, because I haven't had a chance to look into that. But as far as the site plan review, if it meets the zoning requirements, and it meets, and Mr. Webb said that it has no exceptions were asked for, and no request of variances, the neighbors were notified, and it meets all the requirements, I don't see that the city has any choice but to approve it. I think that if you don't, that you're going to be inviting some litigation. So, I mean, I'm not commenting on the merits one way or the other of these gentlemen that spoke, but I'm just saying, from this practical standpoint legally, I tend to agree with you on the approval of the site plan itself. I'm not addressing Alderman McLaurin's statement regarding violation of open meetings law, because I have not had a chance to review the facts and circumstances around that. You're asking me a general question, and I'm giving you a general answer.
So is that a form of a motion, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to Mr. Perkins's motion, or further discussion?
May I ask Mr. Favor a question? Please, sir. I understand what you're saying about the site plan and the review, and our lack of discretion in that matter. However, if there were a flaw in our open meetings handling of the Planning and Zoning meeting, and there was not appropriate notice put out there to the public, the requirements under Open Meetings, Open Records Act, then does that not flaw this entire procedure up until this point?
If there is a flaw in the notice requirements, and I'm not saying one way that...
Right, I'm just asking if there were.
Because I, like I say, this is the first time I've heard about this. Then I think the thing to do would be to go ahead and send out notice, make sure we're in compliance with the open meetings law, and give these people an opportunity to be there, so that we are in compliance. But I, as today, I don't know, because as I say, I just, I just, I'm hearing about this the first time as I'm sitting.
Right.
But I see it as two different issues.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I'm talking about the first issue, not the...
I, I think that what the people need to understand is that even if there is another open meeting, and we're in compliance, that the cities, once it comes, if it comes back to the board for approval, then the city, then my feeling is that the Alderman's hands are somewhat tied, tied, and all the ladies, as to what they can do.
Mr. Favor, just one other follow-up to that. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory panel. Notice was given to the public to, through the Starkdale News, and perhaps the Commercial Dispatch, and perhaps to any other media outlet about tonight's meeting, and about that this matter is going to be considered by this board tonight. Would that be a sufficient remedy for any lack of notice that may not have been given, and that may have been required for the Planning and Zoning, since the Planning and Zoning is only an advisory body, and we are the only body that has the official authority to make any decision regarding Planning and Zoning matters?
Well, in response to that, as I say, this is my first day to be here, to find out about these issues, but Mr. McLaurin said it's been the policy of the city departments to be in, in compliance with open meetings law. If you vary from that, I think that that may be a problem. But as I say, I have not had a chance to research that particular issue, and I, I don't, I mean, you're asking me my opinion just off the cuff, so to speak, and that's the way I feel about it. Understanding that it is an advisory entity.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that motion? So I guess it fails from lack of a second. We'll move on?
Mr. Mayor, I think the proper thing would be to do then, since the board did not adopt this, since the board did not second the motion, would be just to remand this matter back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Will you agree, Mr. Favor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this matter be remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for placement on its agenda at its, at the proper meeting, and with the necessary notice to be given to the public regarding this matter being considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Second.
We have a motion that this be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reconsider and be sure it's well-publicized, please. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. So it's been sent back to Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Mayor, may I say one other thing? Mr. Webb, Mr., I'm sorry, may I say something? Mr. Webb, just for the public's notice tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission meets next week, next Tuesday. That's 12:00, 2005, in this room at 5:30. For the public's information, would this matter be on the agenda for the next regular scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting next week? So, so I just wanted to make that clear, so while those in attendance here, this does constitute verbal notice to the audience, and we'll make sure we get all the other notice.
If that does happen, when will that be posted?
The 19th.
So we could get it officially on...
Uh, yes, and it's, uh, tonight you defeated because of technicalities, okay? And I see no laws to keep you from, say, implementing this procedure, and it'll all be publicly, properly publicized.
Thank you.
This brings us down to public services.
Mayor Camp, with your permission, can I move to item two first and come back to the mosquito?
Uh, yes.
Up here at the table?
Yes.
Thank you. I was asked by Alderman Perkins to give an update on our efforts to rebuild certain roads in the newly annexed areas that have, that have failed. The first step of that process was to get an engineering firm to do soil bores and laboratory tests, and come up with an estimated probable cost to rebuild these two roads, and that's Babylon and Fire Station. I got the original estimate this morning. Bill and I reviewed it, and they have used a, a structure number index and a traffic count that's required for county, state-owned roads, which at one time, these, these roads were, quote, county roads. And the estimated probable cost for this option was about $346,000. Of course, we only had budgeted $200,000. Now, that budget estimate assumed that there's a significant amount of clay gravel underneath the base to allow us to install soil cement and then reasphalt it. According to the reports we got from Mr. Pritchard, there was just a negligible amount of clay gravel, so that option was out, which means we had to basically go back from scratch and reconstruct the base, and that's why that original estimate was so high. Bill and I got on the phone with, with them today, and what Bill recommended is, let's go ahead and lower the structure number to the minimum required for city streets, which is a 2.6. So let's correct Bill. And the estimated prob, and then also, we lowered the traffic count to what we figured was a more realistic projection of the traffic. And with those recommendations, after those changes, came in at $265,000, which is still $65,000 over budget. Bill and I will be discussing further options with them tomorrow. Bill might opt to continue to bring that structure index down to what he feels is a comfortable number to support the traffic and the loads that are on those, and we're going to try to get it within budget, and once we do, Mayor Camp, we'll get with you.
Did you give him my suggestion?
The...
Well, I said to examine the soft spots. We discussed at my office today.
Yeah.
Did you talk to him about what I suggested?
No, Bill, I wanted to see what the saltage was going to be first, but that's something we'll have in our discussions as well.
Do we have any Alderman that would like to ask any questions about?
Mr. Mayor, since these roads are primarily mine ward, I'm going to support your leadership and your recommendations, since you have the full opportunity to discuss it with the staff, so whatever you recommend, I'm going to support it.
Well, with the board's permission, today I discussed with Doug that perhaps there seems to be some very soft spots and location to where he put this $10,000 worth of crushed limestone. It has been my experience in the past that when you build a pad of this particular type of stuff, that I think the issue is that clay gravel is not being properly put down in some of these spots. I think you indicated to me that the drainage on either side of the roads have been totally inadequate, that it allows water to seep in under the roads, thus giving an additional dry spot. My recommendation to him was, I don't think the city's got an additional $65,000 at the time we've talked about additional $135,000, and I suggested that we take those particular areas in which this crushed limestone be placed, and do a compaction to where it basically develops a footprint, and then we take clay gravel to go on top of that, and to see if we could put it in a situation to make it passable. Right now, it's hardly passable, and to make it in a situation to where we could see if we can get some of those issues resolved, where instead of fill a foot and around for another three or four months, deciding on who we're going to do, and what we're going to do, and to go ahead and get something done that would be some degree of passability. At the present time, it's hardly been anything done since we had this issue a month ago, board meeting. I would also like to add that you might take it back home, clean the ditches out, so that there'd be better drainage, and so that we can say, watch those particular areas that are, that present themselves to be problem areas, before we run out and spend another $135,000.
Well, one option, they, one thing they recommended because of the poor drainage was using a ground cloth as the base, which would, and a subcorps, which would help prevent that from.
That, along with the drainage on the side, which I think is probably at winter time penetration, with the lack of ability to run off, is that not correct?
Correct.
And I don't think we heard the inability of the water run off, first time we heard those of us that were at the board meeting regarding that. So I took the initiative to see if we could not resolve some of these issues immediately, that which people have been sitting around, sitting around, waiting on some of these spots to be something done with, that's still sitting out there with all this crushed limestone. If any of you driven your car across any crushed limestone, you would see that they need immediate relief. You want to go back to your report regarding mosquito control?
Hold on just one second, please, sir.
Yes.
Bill, before you get away, could you give us a report on our status of Maple Street ditch and our retention ponds behind there, please, sir?
Yes, we have gotten the report back on the hydrology of that area, and haven't had a chance yet to do some of the required remedial work, but we did go out and reestablish the retention pond that's directly behind Crocker, and helped put the pipes back in to make it actually be an retention pond rather than just flow through, and are going to, and actually, enlarge it a little bit, and we're going to start into remedial work as soon as we can. We hope that we've got it worked out right now for some relief.
So hopefully, with our weather event that's forecast to affect this area over the next few days, we should at least be better off than we were before y'all did that.
We get a compact on.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item was a request by Alderman to present our mosquito control program, and he had some specific questions that I hope I can answer. First thing I'll cover is our current intervention system and the cost of the, our system. We use a two-pronged approach, we call it mosquitoes and tarso. The first one is using adulticide chemicals, which is spray, you see, when the trucks going around town. And currently, we're covering the entire city twice what we, once it's gone, or once it does, with adult mosquito and house affluence. And the other method of control we use is Larvicide, which is addressing mosquito larvae that are in the water, and use slow-desolent tablets in those ditches that have standing water, and we do it at a frequency of two to three months. Our spray operators are certified, require periodic training to maintain their certifications, so they're very, very well versed on the proper use of the chemicals and the labeling, for the label instructions. Annual cost, chemicals run about $20,000. We do this on overtime with the street department, that runs about $1,600. And overhead, you will make this depreciation about $4,000, with a total cost of about $36,000 per year. Next thing, information requested was our chemicals. The product varies from year to year, and with, as new chemicals come out, and also based on the vendor. But our spray currently is a product called Animal 2+2, which is the trade name for semifern, and it's used in extremely low concentrations. It's approximately 85 to 95% effective on adult mosquitoes in the spray area, and it doesn't harm larger insects, for example, grasshoppers, that you want, don't want to do any harm to those. The Larvicide is Altocid Brquetts, and as I said earlier, the slogan... Uh, Larvicide is Altocid Brquetts, and as I said earlier, they're slow to dissolve, dissolving and last approximately two to three months. And whenever we have water moving through the ditch, it has an additional benefit of carrying, um, this pesticide downstream. All the chemicals are EPA approved, if used per label instructions. Another question was, uh, how we determine what, uh, species are in Starkville. Fortunately, last year, there was a company agreement called Vector Disease Control, which had done some surveys, um, set some traps in Starkville and gathered information on the species here and for the purpose of presenting us with a proposal to, uh, to do a full-blown mosquito control program. Unfortunately, this was several hundred thousand dollars, um, and at the time, we felt we couldn't afford it, but they did do a, fortunately, did do a, uh, survey. And they divided the species up into three, uh, areas, and I'm not an entomologist, so I'm not gonna try to pronounce these names. If anybody else is an entomologist, please help me, but, um, the first, uh, first group is what's in your spring and summer floodwater woodlands, and there's six species, um, there. And the one with the asterisk, I'll explain here in a minute. Uh, artificial containers, which are like tires and bird baths and pails that have water, uh, these are the two species they, they found that would thrive in those areas. And then the third area was septic water, which, uh, we do have some, uh, areas of town where people are still using septic systems, and these are the ones they found that would thrive in that area. Uh, the items denoted with the asterisk, the species denoted with the asterisk, which I believe there's one, two, three, four, five of them up there, uh, they denote disease vectors, which are mosquitoes that can carry, uh, bloodborne pathogens, um, like, um, for example, West Nile disease and other, other type of diseases. So we do have that type here in Starkville. Um, the city does not conduct entomology, entomology surveys. The chemical programs were implemented by vendors, address the common species in our area of the state, and the chemicals they usually, they recommend are affected by all these plus others, uh, that aren't listed here. Um, had some questions about our West Nile response program, um, in the past, and I went by Mayor's, Mayor Rutledge's guidance on this because we didn't have a statewide problem last year, but in the, in the past, the city has deferred to the state and local Department of Health agencies whenever we have an epidemic in the state or in our region. Um, and then we get with them and they say, what do, what do you need us to do, you know, to, to help? Citizen calls during that time, um, of course, one thing they, they advertised that they wanted citizens to do in report is if they saw dead birds, 'cause that's, that's a sign of, of West Nile area. And when they called us, we referred them to the Activia County Health Department, 'cause they're the, they're the agency that handles these type of things, and we just defer to them, 'cause really, you just have to have one, one group in charge. City of Public, my department's considering working with, uh, the Health Department, local newspapers, to educate the public regarding minimization of the ones in the artificial containers, which is the tires and the bird baths and the pails and those kind of things. And then we plan to add a link to, to our website as well, to, uh, where people have questions about mosquito control, they can come and, uh, and browse our site and get this information as well. Uh, some questions about no spray requests, um, it's handled on a case-by-case basis. There's really no formal written procedure, Alderman Cox. There's a recent case, the most, a couple of recent cases that, um, y'all are aware of. One is where a, uh, we worked with a citizen the last couple of years to give, uh, advanced notice we're gonna spray, to give that citizen an opportunity to locate out of the area for a couple of days and then return when they felt, uh, that it was appropriate. And the most recent case involves a request by a citizen's physician to spray within a half-mile radius of, of the house, and that's, you know, so you can see, it's, it's kind of a different scenario depending on what, what you face with, so there's really no kind of cut or thing to do on that. Um, now, I say questions, but I'm not an entomologist, I'm sorry. We rely a lot on our vendors, um, you know, they're very knowledgeable, you know, they're experts in the field, and, you know, any, any question, other question you might have, if I can't answer it tonight, I'll be happy to get with our vendor, get you an answer provided as quickly as possible.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Earlier, you said that the city does not conduct any entomologic surveys, and I was wondering, Mississippi State University has a fairly well-done entomology department.
Mm-huh.
I was wondering if you've been in contact with them as far as whether they have conducted any of their own surveys for this area?
Well, we hadn't, didn't really see a need to, um, because the chemicals they supply are gonna kill every species, you know? The vector of disease control was trying to reach species by air, air spraying and, and other, other methods, but the, uh, the, this adulticides that they provide are gonna get just about every species.
Mr. Devlin, in two thousand and three, I believe, previous board, um, considered this issue and, and, uh, gave direction to, uh, to the mayor and staff to, in essence, to continue spraying and not to allow opt-outs, um, at that time. But then you, and what you talked about tonight is that we apparently do allow some. Can you talk a little bit about, um, perhaps who ordered that change, um, in policy, um, and when that was?
Well, the other arrangement was, um, with the citizen for advanced notice where they want to get out of town. And then now this is, was a new case, and of course, um, we gave it to Mayor Rutledge, and he consulted with, uh, council at that time, and this was the recommendation of council.
Was there any notification processed to neighbors, um, that when there was this, uh, no spray in this half-mile radius, um, was there any notification to the other neighbors that there wouldn't be any mosquito spraying?
No.
Or to the Board of Alderman about no spray zones?
Well, like I say, I mean, that was handled by, uh, somebody else.
I certainly appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Devlin?
Mr. Devlin, I thought that you had had, um, a request approval of a collection agreement. Is that something that?
I think that's on the consent agenda, is that later?
Yeah, that's right. Well, we don't bring it up later, uh, it's just, consent agree, uh, agenda is, it's approved, approved amendments.
Did you have a specific question on that?
But you can ask a question.
It, um, may I ask a question? Uh, it, it talked about a forty thousand dollar pass to account and, um, wanted to get a sense of what action has been taken by, I mean, that didn't happen overnight, of course, and what previous direction or action has been taken by, um, pass boards, uh, 'cause I believe this has been ongoing since nineteen ninety-eight.
Speak up, Ed, I can't hear you.
We've turned these accounts over to a collection agency, uh, and, uh, no response. We've sent letters out, uh, no response. The accounts that, uh, we served, uh, warrants, uh, we will collect all those accounts by combination of utility. But, uh, at this point, we're down in wits end as to collecting these sanitation accounts because there's no actual means to, uh, to collect them other than to go to court.
Does our current policy allow for payment of sanitation fee plus collection cost? Or is that separate? Or do we have that currently in our policy?
Uh, I don't believe that's in policy.
My, my sanitation bill is ten dollars and fifty cents. Um, to get to forty thousand dollars, is this a widespread number of people or is it a pretty concentrated number of people who have not paid for seven years?
It's actually the ones that people run last connects, uh, such as down South Twenty Twenty Five, uh, there's some over on, uh, the west side of town, especially this is, it's basically the newly annexed areas. Not all, but most.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This brings us to, uh, general city business of unfinished business. A request from Mr. Patrick Nordine of Starkville Emotion to authorize a bike lane on University Drive from Mississippi State University to Montgomery Street. I think that's actually to the, uh, east side of the bridge before it crosses the railroad. Is that not right, Mr. Cox?
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Nordine, are you here? He stepped out. About five minutes ago. Matt, is this something that we could get you to discuss a moment about? Because you're involved with the same thing, you and PC were involved with the same bike lane.
Just a brief overview, um, a volunteer group called Starkville Emotion, um, has been working to look at an idea of having a bike lane on University Drive, in essence, connecting the university to downtown. Uh, we currently have, uh, people who are bicycling on that road for, uh, transportation purposes as well as recreation. Um, and they're either bicycling in the road or they're bicycling on sidewalks. Um, and this group, uh, has looked at, is there a way for us to safely establish a bike lane on University Drive to allow, um, uh, people to ride safely on, uh, University Drive and hopefully increase, uh, those connections between the two. At the last board meeting, uh, Mr. Nordine made a presentation, uh, requesting this, and the board took this issue under advisement. Um, at that time, the concerns were, are there any liability issues, uh, that the city would take if they provided a bike lane to, um, to the community on University Drive? And, and since that time, um, there's not been any action, uh, and so tonight, I would like to, uh, to have a motion, um, to direct council to report on any liability issues with implementing this proposal.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Is any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. It brings it down to, uh, the mayor's office. My goodness. Uh, this is, uh, general administration. One of the first things that we have is a discussion of municipal justice complex. And we have a resolution, this is not that we are going to pass this tonight, but we have a resolution, whereas discussions concerning the cost of location of a municipal justice complex have never been presented to the voters to the city of the city of Starkville for their approval, and whereas the voters of the city of Starkville should be involved in making the decisions of where to locate a municipal justice complex and how to finance construction of the project. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the mayor and Board of Alderman, the Starkville, city of Starkville as follows, that at the earliest opportunity, the mayor and Board of Alderman shall adopt a formal resolution, setting this date for a referendum for the purpose of allowing the voters of the city of Starkville to decide where the bonds of the city of Starkville should be issued for the construction of a municipal justice complex. Thank you. And I believe we need a, a motion to accept that intent.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be my honor to, uh, to propose that we do that in, in the form of a, uh, this, to accept this and adopt this resolution. Um, this is an issue that, uh, the voters spoke on, I think, very clearly in this last election, um, and this will, in my opinion, right or wrong, and I'm proud to, uh, to sponsor this resolution, to declare our intent to have a resolution, uh, to, to have a referendum on this issue.
Do we have a second to this motion? We have a second to this motion? Do we have any other discussion of this motion? All those in favor of this motion, please?
Wait, wait, just a second.
You want to discuss it, obviously.
Obviously. Uh, a number of things that I would make the point, uh, here in connection with this resolution. Uh, certainly, one has no objection in referring things to the people for a, uh, vote up or down. Uh, certainly, this was a matter of concern to, uh, uh, many of the voters, uh, around the city of Starkville. Uh, the exact extent, uh, can be, uh, debated. Uh, but what we are doing here is creating a very, uh, tangled jumble of situations where there is already on the books and approved a motion to, uh, authorize and approve the issuance of bonds up to the amount of five million dollars. Uh, the election time for that issue has passed. It creates to, to have such a resolution creates a very, uh, jumbled and, uh, mixed-up process, which completely goes against the normal bond issuance process, uh, in the state of Mississippi. And if it is the board's intent to, uh, do what is proposed here, there are more specific and more appropriate ways, in my opinion, to do those things.
Mr. McLaurin, you had your opinion when the voters were, all the names were taken off and we heard all this mixed-up emotional things that were going on at the time. I may be speaking out of order, but, uh, it seems to me that, uh, the public's not aware that there were two thousand and twenty registered voters at the time the petition was turned in. I don't think the public's aware of the number of the folks. And through, uh, mixed-up issues and other things like that, there were approximately six hundred people's names that were deleted from this petition. That's my say. We have a motion, we have a second. Yes, sir. Sure.
In, in light of what Alderman McLaurin just brought up, and in light of the concerns that you and Mr. Cox have brought up, you know, it, it might be appropriate to amend this resolution, and I'll do so in the form of a motion, that we rescind authorization to issue bonds up to five million dollars for the purposes of constructing municipal buildings, specifically municipal justice complex. That way, we eliminate the concerns that Mr. McLaurin has, and we still accomplish the basic intent of this resolution, because it'll allow everybody to start over again and we can go through this process and allow for a vote and not be conflicted with state law.
Mr. Mayor, I would second that motion. That is the proper way to proceed. If we wish the voters to vote on whether or not to issue bonds, then we need to start that process over and allow such a thing to occur, and I'm fully in support of the voters' voting in a normal process. To do otherwise would, in effect, negate and invalidate the existing bond issue.
I see, and so would you like to add that as an amendment to this, or would you like to start the whole thing over again? Mr. Cox, uh, has a motion here for this to be.
My motion was to amend that resolution.
I heard you saying to amend that. Uh, do you, uh, do we have a second to his motion? I believe you just seconded in your form to amend the motion that we have on the floor. Do you have any problem with your motion being amended in that manner, Mr. Cox?
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Excellent. Uh, do we have any further discussion of this? Mills, do you have a question?
No, I think I've already.
Okay.
The only thing I've learned of this, the piss is gonna get us in bob in a jumble or what have you.
We ain't gonna be no jumble, no more jumbles, okay? It's pretty clear-cut. Uh, we ain't gonna have any misunderstandings, okay? Everybody's familiar with the motion. Can you read all that back to make it, uh, clear for everybody what we're voting on?
Would you like me to repeat, Ms. Outlaw?
Well, I had that you, uh, the amendment is to rescind authorization to issue the bonds up to five million for the municipal justice complex.
Close enough.
All right, do we have any further discussion on this motion? So I guess it's time to vote. All those in favor of voting on this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe it's passed without any mumble jumble. Uh, the second item we have here is to request an authorization to solicit for people who are very interested in being the city attorney, letters of interest for our new municipal attorney.
I'd like to make a motion, we authorize for solicitation of letter of interest for municipal attorney.
Uh, would you add a little more to it and say, put cost structures and a few other issues in there?
Yeah, that we could draft up a qualification. Uh, I understand that most of the responsibilities of a municipal attorney is, uh, by statute are, but if we make and add some, um, responsibilities that we so desire of a city attorney.
Well, we pretty well need those specifications in the motion.
I'm not sure exactly to what Mr. Cox refers, uh, with, uh, state law and specification- I'm not sure exactly to what Mr. Cox refers with state law and specifications, excuse me, on Mr. Mills.
Let's get this straight, Mr. McLaurin.
Mr. Cox is sitting in my seat, I'm sitting in Lee Beck's seat. We just all turned around here. Not sure to what Mr. Mills refers, but normally in a process of seeking a, a professional, the city would issue a request for proposals or for indications of interest, letters of interest in the particular spot. Now, either on the front end, the city would specify what it wants to determine as the, in this case, what was mentioned, the financial terms of that particular appointment, or can do it the other way and request that the proposers indicate their, the, the structure, financial structure under which they would be willing to work, and then that be subject to negotiation by the city and the person deemed suitable in the negotiation process. It can be done either way, advantages, disadvantages, six to one, half does the other.
You willing to have that language to your motion?
That may vouch.
That's excellent. Okay, is that agreeable with most of the rest of you? Do we have any further discussion?
Excuse me.
See, I didn't mean for it to go along.
I understand, and we, we're just rolling good. Did we specify which way we want to do it? Want them to specify financial structure?
I think that would probably best that they would specify what, what arrangements they'd be willing to work under.
Right, well, we didn't specify which way, yeah.
And that, with seven days appropriate to advertise for this, or is this for professional services can be done sooner than that?
It could be done sooner than that. With, with all due respects to the brethren that are members of the bar in the room, seven days seems not long enough.
Seven business days. Well, we'll be back here on the 19th.
But yes, in answer to your question, seven days would be enough if there are people out there that are interested and have ample time given their practice load to put in a proposal.
We have a motion and we have a second, I believe to that motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Now we bring down a request from the mayor's office for authorization to advertise for it.
Before you move to that item, I'd like to make a motion that we retain an interim attorney, and we have a very good one sitting right next to you, Mr. Faber, until such time as we hire a municipal attorney.
Very good, thank you. I almost let that, we got a, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes. You're gonna be sitting over here for a few days.
Mr. Camp, I believe we do have a point of discussion over here.
Well, it was just a question, how much are we gonna be paying Mr. Faber?
He's on hourly basis, aren't you? Was that a hundred dollars an hour?
Here we get into a perfect example of my point, talk about it on the front end of the conversation.
I bet he won't be charging us on the same hourly basis that our previous attorney charged us on the same, on the hourly basis.
Oh goodness, I would hope that he would.
You hope that he would?
Uh huh.
God, it'd be kind of expensive.
Not at all.
Next request is to authorize to advertise for a chief administrative officer.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second that we advertise for the chief administrative officer. All of you having your packet passed out to your job description. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
It brings us down to authorization to advertise for an interim city planner, and I might add on there for a regular senate city planner as well, to have kind of a combination here for a full-time city planner and an interim planner if we so find a person who's willing to advertise for the interim position.
And I would so move the authorization of the advertisement.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Is this also a seven-day advertising thing that we advertise?
We can do that, remember, one must not be disappointed if we don't get a whole lot of responses within seven days, and must be prepared to extend that deadline.
Right, I think I'll be driving to, to the coast by that time, and I'll stop at every place that might possibly have one and ask somebody to apply for it. We have a motion with a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Point of discussion, please. I spoke with Ms. Johnston concerning how we go about attracting the best interim city planner or city planner, and she recommended two websites are the places where city planners go on a regular basis, and I'll provide those to, to Mr. Young.
Sounds like they have a hot coffee shop, is that right? That's all these city planners go to. And I might add that Oxford's been looking for one for two years.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. The next, the next is to, and you have a job description, is to authorize to advertise for an administrative assistant to the mayor and a deputy city clerk.
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second, all those please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Our next thing is executive session to discuss potential litigation of the mosquito spraying, the ongoing litigation involving the city, and discussion of reappointment department heads.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this meeting be closed for determination as to whether or not an executive session should be declared.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent, we appreciate all of you coming out tonight.
Let's declare finally a break while they clear.
That's not bad. We're gonna get it down to. How you, how you doing, lady? I appreciate you coming tonight, and I hope that we can add spice to this.
Well, either way, take over and do what you want.